All right, everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Graham Cassoun. Johnson.
Here.
Jean Francois.
Here.
Summers.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes?
We have the minutes from the January 19th, 2016, Common Council Meeting.
Motion by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Summers. Roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
We have one correspondence. This is an application for a subdivision for 2 to 8 to 10 to 20 James P. Kelly Way.
Received and filed. Our forward planning?
That is all for correspondence.
For the good of the city, anyone who likes to address this council, please step forward.
Hi, my name is Maureen Kelly. I'm 66 years old. I live at 69 Railroad Avenue. I've lived there for 16 years, here in Middletown, right next to Tony Boffers. And this is my second time here. I came here two weeks ago, but didn't understand what was going on, so I missed my chance to speak. And even though I am sick right now, I was not letting this chance go. I have a complaint about, I don't even know who. Is it Town Council? Is it the Building Inspector? Is it the Board of Health? Is it the State Department? Because they keep sending me around in circles. And I have the name and numbers of everybody who has done this to me. And if I seem annoyed, I am. Not at you, just annoyed. I've had mold in my apartment for three years. And nobody has done nothing. And I let it go for a little bit here and there, but it is totally affecting my health now. And I've got, I'm not going to say right here now who I did, because I have a little further to go in this, but I've gone to some of the heads of Middletown. And nothing was done. Nobody has forced this landlord to do anything about it. I've lived here for 16 years, had roaches. That's natural. People move in, people, they bring roaches. You get the place bombed, and they're gone. 16 years, never had bedbugs. Last month, I have bedbugs. And you want to know why? Because this landlord, the lady on third floor had them. Took them a few months. Guess who? He bombed. Didn't bomb. You bomb for roaches. For bedbugs, use a spray. Did third floor. Guess what? Lady on second floor had them. She goes, gets rid of her mattress, puts it outside, goes, buys a new mattress, wraps this mattress in plastic, thinking that's going to work. It's going to keep the bedbugs off. From what I understand, it doesn't. Now, my neighbor next door, in September, was infested. That was the word used, infested, with bedbugs. Everything in his apartment was taken out, put outside, or put in the bin where we put our trash. And when I complained and said, "You can't do this anymore. You've got to do my apartment. You've got to do the building." They're, it's like a roach, a bedbug hotel. They're going from room to room to room, whichever ever has the best service. And now, I have them. And I am sick of them. And if you want to see what I have?
No, no, no.
You shouldn't be bringing them out here.
Oh, well, I just, in case you think I'm making it up.
No, we don't.
Here are pictures I have from 2013, which are documented on a computer, on my daughter's computer, the date is on them. I was in the hospital for 23 days in May of 2013 with a fungus infection. Almost died. Never put it on, the stupid mold. I'm thinking of the three restaurants that I had gone to, and that was all it could have been, because I don't drink from many, but I'm funny. I don't like germs. So I have pictures documented from 2013 and from 2015. And I'm still getting pushed around in a circle, and nobody doing nothing. What are these landlords in this town? Do they run it? Do you get my point?
We get your point.
And again, I don't mean to be rude, but I am burnt out. Like I said, I have talked to the Attorney General's office, and guess what? If I lived in Trump Towers, and they had mold there, well, then they would do something, because that's a big building, and that's a bunch of people. But see, I'm not a people. I'm a person. So I have to fight 10 times as hard. And I've had it. And I'm not stopping here. But I had to come and state my point. And I thank you for listening, and...
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for listening.
Hopefully, we'll move forward, we'll see.
Excuse me?
I said, hopefully, we'll move forward, we'll see.
I hope so. I'm going forward. I have...
We hope so, too.
...other ventures. But I wanted to bring it here, so nobody can say, "You didn't say nothing." It's said. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alderman Massey?
Only because it's a, it's a volatile issue. There's no question about it. It's televised, and as it should be. However, I happen to be in that meeting when that young lady came into the mayor's office. Was it last week? I think it was...
22nd.
Whatever it was.
Who's driving?
All right. And we then got in touch with Jacob, brought Jacob, and I don't know if you want to address it at all, Jacob. I know that, well, because I don't want to leave that type of what she had to say out there fresh, and people say that is no one listening. And I, I feel your frustration. I certainly do. I heard it in your voice and everything. But I wanted people to know that it hasn't gone on deaf ears. Sometimes, government moves slower than what we would like it to be, but if you don't mind...
Commissioner?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. The mayor and the council, council member, Mr. Alderman Massey, they did advise me of the situation of this, of the lady here and the complaint. And it so happened that we did inspect the apartment for the annual inspection just the day before she came in to complain. And we did dispatch the building inspector again to meet with her. And we already have the landlord in court. We had the paper filed and everything before she came in, she complained to the mayor. So we already have the landlord in court. Bedbugs and, unfortunately, they are, they are touchy subject where the landlord, he says, "Well, listen, I didn't bring the bedbugs in here. I don't want to get into too much details." But they say, they point fingers at each other. We are in the middle of it. As the last resort, we end up condemning the apartment. Unfortunately, the tenant will be thrown out then. So we tried to take our time to resolve this issue in there. Although we're extremely concerned, the landlord, he says, "Well, it's not my fault. It's the tenant who brought it in," and so on and so forth. But we get this situation all the time. We deal with it as delicately as we can in there, so that the tenant will not be, will not end up being thrown out in the street and there, because we're going to have to condemn the apartment because of unhealthy condition that the apartment is in. Go ahead.
The building inspector, I know, when you called him, and she was going back to her house, and it was going to be 10:30, they were going to meet. Did they meet?
Yes, yes, yeah. The code enforcement officer, absolutely. We're following up on it. We have these situations, thank God, not all over the city, but in limited areas in there. And we get into that situation. He already presented the receipt that he did have a bedbugs expert coming, like, two days after, after we filed the... However, we are still taking him to court. And the code enforcement officer is following up on it. And these situations happen, and I'm not, you know, I'm not justifying them. It's just they happen, and they point finger at each other. We try not to make a victim out of the tenant by being thrown out, by us coming in and condemning it, because somebody has to clean it. It's not us. It's either the landlord or the tenant, and that's the issue in there. So we, we, we walk very carefully with these situations. Unfortunately, sometimes it takes time.
Thank you, Jacob. Anyone else? I'm sorry...
I would like to just make a reply to that.
Okay.
You don't want to make things hard? Condemn the apartment. I am a senior. I will go live in the street. I'll go anywhere. I'll go to my granddaughter's in Manhattan. But make a statement. Put the condemn sign in there, so other landlords know, "You can't do this. Pass the buck, and pass the buck." Condemn it. I don't care.
All right, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council? Okay. Report to department heads. Economic Development, Maria?
Nothing this evening.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria. Corporation Counsel, Rich?
Thank you. Good evening. Two items, one of which was already discussed at the Community Development Agency meeting by Vice Chairman Johnson, who said that at the end of the meeting, there will be a resolution from the floor to transfer some of the properties the city took at tax sale over to the CDA. So I was glad to hear that. Second, you also have a resolution in front of you tonight with respect to the industrial pretreatment program. As you know, this is something that was generated through, through an action brought by EPA with respect to industrial users of our sewage treatment plant and sewage system. And Commissioner Twill, the mayor, and I have been in negotiations along with our engineer consultants with EPA over the course of a couple of years. And I believe it was last June, you approved the industrial pretreatment program. The next step after that approval was it had to be submitted to EPA for their final review and approval. And they reviewed it, and they had a few suggestions as to wording and consistency that they, that they wanted to see tightened up. And what you have in front of you tonight is the report from our engineers, who have made those corrections as requested by EPA. And so what you're doing tonight is putting the final stamp on top of that. Once that's done, then EPA has told us they're very happy with the program and with these minor changes, then they can officially give it their seal of approval, and then we can go on from there. So I just wanted to clarify that, in case anyone had any questions.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions for Rich? Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Commissioner, DPW?
Yeah. Good evening again. Just to report to you about that industrial pretreatment program that the Corporation Counsel was speaking of. We have started implementation. We visited many installations in the city of Middletown and facilities, and many of them have been issued permits. We did put classified ad in the paper with the name of the entities that have received the IPP. There is one or two in there that they have not complied yet, and unfortunately, we're going to have to start, we will be taking them to court, because we have a strict compliance schedule in our ordinance now. It's part of our ordinance, part of our code, that everybody must comply with. So the, the one or two entities that have not complied, they will be taken to court, and there will be some financial penalties and hardship imposed on them if they don't comply ASAP. The wastewater treatment plant continues to generate great revenue for us, even in January, and we're happy for that. From, again, from outside, subteach haulers. King Street project, if some of you guys, if you've been out there, because the weather has been nice, the construction has been moving very smoothly without any issues, and they made some major progress there. They're going to continue to, to work the contractor, and tell the weather will not permit them to work anymore. But so far, we're very happy with the progress of the project. Before you tonight, there is a secret resolution, which basically will allow us, once it's approved, that will allow us to complete our finance application for the state revolving fund. And that's for Phase 2 of Sterling Street. And that will be using slip lining and spot excavation to update and upgrade sewer line from Grant Street all the way to, all the way to Sterling Street. That goes through backyards, undersheds, and so on and so forth. We're trying to use technology in there, pipe bursting and slip lining technology and lining technology in there, so we don't have to excavate very close between buildings and culverts, and so on and so forth. With your blessing, should you, should you accept this, should you approve this, by, we will be able to meet the deadline for the state revolving fund. We have $150,000 grant from the EFC, and the rest of the $600,000 estimated cost will be financed by low interest, a loan from EFC, which is really minimal interest that they charge us. Before you also, asbestos abatement contractor, consultant, resolution to hire that consultant to work with our architects on Woolworth Building, to remove any asbestos in there, abate it, put it out for public bid, and be able to go through the improvement. And the heritage trail going through the building, like the mayor has envisioned, this will be an essential component of that project. I will stop right here, except if you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Alderman Kleiner?
Yeah. Thank you, Jacob.
Yes, sir.
You have one other resolution here, that I just wondered what the Vincent Drive Sewer Agreement was.
Yeah.
I know this is just a catch-up payment, but...
Yeah, it's a catch-up payment. Usually, it's, it's, it's put in a budget by another, another entity in the city in there, and it just, it filled through the cracks. They never budgeted that. That Vincent Drive, basically, there's a section of Vincent Drive that, there's sewage. It flows towards the town of Walkill. So it flows by gravity. It's easier, easier, rather than pumping it up to us. It goes towards the town of Walkill. So town of Walkill, at the end of each year, they send us a bill based on the water usage of how much sewage went towards their wastewater treatment plant. So that filled through the crack during the budgeting process.
Right.
And now it's a catch-up, and hopefully, it will be flagged, so next time it doesn't happen. Yeah. But it's, yeah.
Any other questions? Alderman Johnson?
At the risk of prolonging the previous conversation, I understand what you said about parasites. Is a mold abatement a different protocol than...
Yeah.
Could you clarify what, how mold abatement is handled, as far as a landlord tenant?
I would just go after the landlord. It's not the tenant. That's why he's in court.
On the mold?
On the mold, absolutely, yes. We talked about, she complained about, the lady complained about bedbugs and cockroaches and mold. Mold, no question about it. It's, it's the landlord who's responsible for it.
Okay.
And that is why he's in court. The bedbugs are the issue in there, where they point fingers at each other and so on.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alderman Kleiner?
Just one more thing you reminded me of. I just want to say, with bedbugs, if you're not treating the apartment above and below, may as well not treat it, and I think we know that. I saw the private property signs were still up on our parkland on this psych center. Are we going to remove those?
You know what? I think, I think I dropped the ball on this one. You told me about it. I don't think I followed through. My apologies.
Okay.
Yeah, my apologies. I think I...
Just wanted to make sure no issue came.
Address right the blame, yeah. I think I dropped the ball. Now, since I have a few more minutes in there, I'm going to tell you about a new experiment. Actually, the mayor's idea, dealing with the crows, very quickly. If you, when you leave tonight, just look across, at Festival Square, we put a strobe light in there. When we had the power outage for the crows, to fight the crows, when we had the power outage in there, I went outside, and I had a flashlight in my hand, flashed it at the crows. They all took off, scared them, just flashing it. So we're discussing it with the mayor. I think Mr. Massey was there, and the council president. So the mayor said, "Jacob, why don't we try putting a strobe then? It might work." So tonight is the first night, the strobe is active, and if you look, the tree that is where the crows can see the flashing, the strobing light, it's empty. There's nothing on it. The other one, across from the police department, it's loaded with crows. So I took pictures of it. We're going to watch them. It has a clock, and we can change, right now, sit up at half an hour on, half an hour off. We may have to change and play with it, because they're very smart, the crows. They'll get used to it, you know? It's not going to hurt them. So we'll see how much of a success this is going to be. So, so far, so good, tonight, Alderman.
Thank you, Jacob. John?
I have nothing this evening.
Any questions for John?
I didn't miss anybody, right?
Martha Waldman, Alderman Massey?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Burr?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. I did attend the meeting of the Community Affairs Bureau, which is sponsored by the DA's office. I did provide you with information, both the agenda and some supplementary information. I just wanted to call your attention to two items. The SMART program, I described this. This is a program where parents who are not paying attention to their children going to school, instead of being a school issue or a family court issue, this program allows the DA's office to make it a legal issue, where a parent could be brought up on charges of educational neglect. And they just gave us an update on that program. There were 54 cases. It starts off with a letter, and the DA's office is happy to report that in 23 of those cases, the attendance improved immediately after the parents realized that they would be subject to legal action by not taking care of their children going to school. So they deemed that a success. They also wanted to call your attention to the Family Engagement Specialist Program. This was presented by Steve Pack, who's a juvenile detention officer. And this is a program where they have designated a social worker to be a contact person for a family when a juvenile has kind of bumped up against the legal system. Whether we like it or not, small cities tend to be a demographic where this program can be helpful. And Steve did provide us with a summary sheet, and was happy to report that more than 70% of the families took advantage of the program, and the number of either removals from the home or rearrests was down significantly. So these are programs that are sponsored at the DA's level, but they do affect our quality of life here in Middletown. So just wanted to let you all know about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. Just want to invite folks in the second ward to come out for our second ward constituent meeting. It'll be next Monday, February 8th, from 7 to 8 o'clock. Hope to see you. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Okay, thank you. The social host law, I attended the county committee meetings where that was proposed. And I bring it up because Middletown Cares discussed it when the DA actually proposed it in 2014 as part of his Stop DWI initiative, which nobody seemed to remember at the county level. But they, it will be Thursday. I'm going to try and speak in favor of it on behalf of Middletown Cares, and I thank them, because they did change it from over 18 to anyone 18 and over. Because when you're 18, you're no longer a minor, you're able to have your own place, you're able to host parties, and you need to be responsible and accountable. Just so people know, I've, I've done this before and mentioned the planning board meeting that's coming up. But what is at this point on the agenda is a proposal for an industrial place, the C and D transfer, to also accept full municipal solid waste. That was...
It was pulled.
By...
It was pulled.
Oh, it was...
It was pulled off the agenda.
Well, there...
It will be used in that area, so it's been...
Okay. Thank you. It's, it's on the agenda that I printed out today, but...
I got an email today, Jerry. I could email it to you.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Yeah, it was a concern, because it was never a part of any of the original proposals. And we had a suggestion at our ward meeting last time, that one of the signs, like the ones at the crossings at the college, where it says, "Stop for pedestrian crossings." It would be a good idea to have that out by the crosswalk in front of City Hall, because the handicap parking is in the James Street lot, and that's where people have to use that and come across that street to do our handicapped entrance here, which is difficult. We need to make sure we keep the outside and inside doors unlocked when we have public meetings here. But I thank the person for this suggestion, because it would be a good idea to have that sign, so that people know when someone is in that crosswalk, they need to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Francois?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Summers?
The Legislative Committee met this evening to discuss the Policies and Procedures Manual for the Mulberry House Senior Center and a reciprocal electrical license agreement with Orange County. The discussions have been tabled for further review. John, can I schedule a meeting?
The next opening is March 1st, and it's either 6:30, 7, in between 6:30 and 7 o'clock.
6:30, please. March 1st. A shout-out to our own Aaron Tivett for his role as Danny Zuko in Grease Live on Sunday Night. He really did a great job making the part his own. Finally, Jude and I have come up with dates for our Saturday morning fourth ward quarterly meetings. They are April 9th, July 2nd, and October 8th. The meetings will be at 10:00 AM in the Common Council Chambers. We will email a reminder to the constituents in the database. The dates are also posted on the website. We will see if we can increase participation. You can always call Jude and me or email us with concern. Thank you.
Thank you. New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize Adam McCary, Fire Inspector, to attend the 2016 Train the Trainer Program in Montora Falls, New York, from February 23rd, 2016 through February 24th, 2016.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to accept a check in the amount of $50 from the Monhegan Hose Company Number One to the Middletown Neighborhood Watch Program, and this was in 2015.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to accept a check in the amount of $50 from the Monhegan Hose Company Number One to the Middletown Neighborhood Watch Program, and this was in 2015.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey? Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr to approve an amendment to the city code fee schedule A490-1, Section F, Parks and Recreation, to update the current fees.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Francois to renew the JCO Inc. contract for professional management service for the water treatment system for the same rate with no increases from January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Francois, seconded by Aldman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey to approve an asbestos abatement consultant proposal for the Woolworth Project and to fund this proposal from the Capitol Project Line, Woolworth Project, and authorize the mayor to sign all paperwork for this project.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt to amend the city code for the Michael G. Perkins Community Center Parking Lot to halt nighttime parking.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt, seconded by Aldman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr to close any and all streets and intersections necessary for the St. Joseph's Church to have their outdoor stations of the cross procession on Friday, March 21st, 2016, beginning at 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to accept a $10,000 grant from the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services to offset the cost of the purchase of a new LifeScan equipment for the Middletown Police Department and create a new line in the 2016 budget for this grant.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, um, Johnson, sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer from the sewer fund a total of $13,192.51 for treated sewage as per the Vincent Drive Sewer Agreement.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Summers to declare the common council to be lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act for the sewage collection system improvements, Phase Two, and declare an unlisted action for this project.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Summers, seconded by Aldman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr to grant a waiver of 30 days for the notification requirement set forth in Section 62-2A of the New York Alcoholic Beverage Control Law for El Zapam Mexican Restaurant, 16 and 1/2 East Main Street, based on the terms set by the planning board.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to rezone four par, I'm sorry, three parcels on Chestnut Avenue from OR2, two-family owner occupied residential district to C1 Neighborhood Business District.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman John Francois. Any discussion? Aldman Johnson?
Patience is a virtue. Thanks.
Anyone else? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Francois to approve and adopt amendments to the industrial pretreatment program recommended by the EPA.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Francois, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
Aldman Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution to authorize the transfer of property from the city of Middletown to the CDA. There were 14 properties that were designated at the recent meeting of the CDA. I assume I do not have to read this whole document into the record.
Motion by Aldman Johnson. Do I have a second? Aldman Burr? Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Audit. Mr. President, I move the counts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the state treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.